Like background music for us? Great, okay. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Anderson and members of the committee. My name is Lisa Reynolds. Oh, I am so sorry. Ms. Hart, can you outline what Senate Bill 702 does?
Absolutely. Chair Reynolds, Vice Chair Anderson, members of the committee, Senate Bill 702 prohibits the distribution or sale of any flavored tobacco products. It also prohibits the free distribution of any tobacco products flavored or unflavored, such as promotional giveaways or free samples. It requires that all tobacco product sales occur at licensed retailers and allows local governments to impose stricter regulations than the state law.
Thank you. Good afternoon, starting over, Vice Chair Anderson and members of the committee. My name is Lisa Reynolds, and I'm the State Senator for Senate District 17, and it's an honor to bring this bill before you today, Senate Bill 702, which ends the sale of flavored tobacco and flavored synthetic nicotine products in the state of Oregon. Briefly, this, the measure defines characterizing flavors. It expands the definition of nicotine to include synthetic and emerging products, things we haven't thought of yet, and it ends the sale of flavored tobacco and nicotine products in our state. Of note, this measure excludes FDA-approved smoking cessation products, and it has a long runway, which will be in an amendment, not in the, in the base bill, with the implementation date of July 1st, 2026. As you know, I'm a pediatrician, and it's that work that informs all that I do in this legislature, and it is the health and safety of our youngest Oregonians that is at the heart of this measure. Ending the sale of flavored tobacco in Oregon would prevent the lifelong nicotine addiction, the short-term health impacts, and long-term disease wrought by these products. Flavored tobacco products encompass a broad range of forms. I have a few, which I will pass among us when I return to the dais, from menthol cigarettes to sweetly-flavored aerosol vapes, as well as flavored chew and cigars. And flavors include cotton candy, what do we have here, strawberry bliss, watermelon limeade. These flavors mask the noxious, tarry taste and smell of tobacco, which would otherwise deter a young person from smoking traditional cigarettes. Put simply, these palatable flavors are gateway. They're delivered and packaged that mimic, that mimic and smells like candy. If you have time to stop by our cart in the hallway outside, you will see mimics candy, and which contain actual electronic cigarettes, or we call them vapes because it's vaporized nicotine. They even have little video games embedded in them. I think the one on my, on my desk has a video game, oh, think, embedded in them. I have, who's the person from? Vanna. Thank you. I don't mean to. These, so these are explicitly designed for children, right? I mean, to the point where Juul, a maker of flavored vapes, settled lawsuits to the tune of half a billion dollars when charges were brought against them for improperly marketing these products to children. Oregon got about $20 million of that, and Juul now only sells unflavored products save for, save for one menthol product. And, and the problem here is that now these kids become addicted for life. They are hooked by very high levels of nicotine in these products, which is one of the most addicting drugs on the planet. I've seen patients in my own practice who are struggling to quit this addiction before they're able to get a driver's license, or their first job, or even graduate high school. And in these young people, nicotine triggers symptoms of ADHD and anxiety and depression, and that demoralizing feeling that I can't stop using a substance even though I want to. I'm here today, as I am most days in this building, putting front and center the health and safety of Oregon children. I already said the Juul part because it just seemed to be better there. But ending the sale of flavored tobacco through Senate Bill 702 is about preventing our kids from this addiction, which sets them on a lifelong path of, with substances that lead to lung damage, heart disease, cancer, and early death. And luckily, our communities are fighting back, right? County commissioners in Multnomah County and Washington County, which is about a, which together, is about a third of our state population, have already chosen to protect their constituents with this public health measure. In Washington County, big tobacco tried to overturn the, the ban there, and 70% of voters said no to the overturn. They said, do not sell flavored tobacco products in our county. So why can we not extend, extend these protections statewide? Well, we can, and Senate Bill 702 will help us do that. We're not the first state. We have California, Massachusetts, New Jersey, New York, and Rhode Island have already done this. And as I said, I'm here putting the health and safety of children first and foremost. I urge you to do the same, and now I will turn it over to colleagues, partners, experts, and members of the public.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Chair Reynolds, Vice Chair Anderson, and the members of the committee. For the record, I'm High Fam of the House District, Representative for House District 36. As many of you know, I'm a pediatric dentist. I've been serving patients in the Washington County area for almost 20 years, did all my training at OHSU and Dornbecker. I love my job and love being able to make a positive impact on a child's health every time they come to my office. The goal drives my, drives my work here in the legislature, which is why I'm here to testify in support of SB 702. At its heart, SB 702 and the Dash Amendment will improve the health of our children and help prevent a lifetime of addiction with these kids. Flavored tobacco products, vapes in particular, have been marketed as safer than traditional cigarettes, and come in flavors such as cotton candy, orange soda, and now informs of video games, as we saw earlier, to make it more appealing to children. In Oregon, the data shows that more than half of youth and young adults who use tobacco are using flavored tobacco products and vaping products, and 81% of our youth and 86% of our young adults start with a flavored tobacco product. And the toll of tobacco is clear. Tobacco is the number one cause of preventable death and disease, and yet tobacco use kills over 8,000 Oregonians. And if we don't act now, 68,000 of our Oregon youth under the age of 18 today will die prematurely from smoking later on in life. The toll of tobacco is heavy and disproportionately impacts our more marginalized communities and youth, who often fall victim to predatory marketing practices. We know that the marketing tactics with products like V-Play, a vape that includes three retro games that come in flavors like Grape Escape, Blue Raz Bash, and other products like a single-use disposable unit vapes that can come as low as $10 to $15 on the market. We know they work to target our most vulnerable communities, and these tactics do work. In 2022, more than a quarter of tobacco retailers in Oregon failed the minor decoy operation and failed to verify the minor's age. Grocery stores were the most likely to fail the test in the first year of the program, with 37% of those failing the test. On top of this, Oregon's current laws don't address synthetic nicotine products, as they can be legally purchased by anyone under the age of 21. I want to emphasize this. ZYN, which are synthetic nicotine pouches that are included flavored products or non-regulated products in the Oregon, and any child can walk into a store and purchase it. We, as a state, need to pass SB 702 to give the state the authority to regulate and prevent the sale of flavored synthetic nicotine to children. You may hear that some individuals use these products as a tool, as a cessation device. I want to make it clear for the record that currently, these products are not registered as cessation devices through the FDA. However, knowing that addiction is a personal journey, I encourage any product to apply to be a FDA-approved cessation device, and if they are approved, they will be exempt from this law. Nothing about SB 702 will change the availability of FDA cessation devices, even if they're bubblegum or watermelon flavored. Committee members, we have a public health crisis in our hands. Just as we have worked decades to address the harmful impacts of cigarettes and cigars, with the regulations to prevent and mitigate the negative impacts of the tobacco, we need to take action this, this session to address our next epidemic of flavored tobacco products. These products still contain harmful chemicals that create serious health problems for youth and adults. In the midst of a youth mental and behavioral health crisis and significant underinvestment in our state's public health, we need to be doing more to protect families and the kids from a lifetime of addiction to nicotine. By ending the sale of flavored tobacco, we can protect our children from preventable illness and oral health problems and save lives. And as parents, I know many of us agree that we can make, want to make sure that we protect our kids, and this is one step that we can do. Committee members, I strongly urge your support for SB 702 with the dash one amendment. Thank you.
Vice Chair Anderson, members of the committee. For the record, I'm Janine Solomon. I'm the State Senator for Senate District 15, and that includes areas of Forest Grove, Cornelius, Hillsborough, and the Rock Creek area of Washington County. The number one reason that I am here today is to support Senate Bill 702 is simply for our kids. We should not be attracting our youth with fruity flavors and gaming products to, gaming vape cartridges to become addicted to a product that will cause lasting harm to their health. The passage of Senate Bill 702 will end the sale of all flavored tobacco products. This session, I'm sponsoring a bill that will be adding vape detectors to high school bathrooms. Senate Bill 544, this bill was brought to me by a student, a student in my district who was concerned about the amount of vaping taking place all around him in his high school. Every time he goes into the restroom, the smoke is overwhelming. He wanted to find a way to make sure that the restrooms in his school are safe places free from smoke. Preventing youth access to tobacco products needs to be a top priority, and banning those products that are more appealing to our youth is another step towards achieving that goal. In 2019, the Oregon Health Authority estimated that 1 in 4 11th graders in the state was using a vaping product, and in Washington County, which includes my district, 75% of 11th graders reported using flavors. 75%. If they used a tobac, reported using a, using flavors, or if they've used a tobacco product. So banning the sale and advertisement of flavored tobacco products will make it less desirable for youth to use and buy these products. With the boom in popularity of flavored vaping, there is also another thing to consider. The environmental cost of vaping is real, and with no clear way of disposal, not only are they harming our youth, but they're also harming our environment. There are other countries that are taking action in this part, in this because they see the concerns to their environment with these products. This is contributing to our waste, with many components such as batteries, plastic casings, cartridges ending up in landfills where they take years to decompose. Vapes, or not at all, vapes that contain lithium batteries are not disposed of properly. If they are not, they can lead to battery fires in our landfills, and this is a growing problem across the state. Banning flavored tobacco products is the right thing to do for the health and safety of our youth and the health and safety of our environment. Colleagues, for these reasons, I urge your support of Senate Bill 702. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
In, in, with respect of Senator Brock Smith, would you like to come forward? Thank you. You can move the props if you'd like.
Oh, no, I almost brought mine home.
Yeah, you might, or grab it on your way out, or.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Reynolds, Vice Chair Anderson. For your record, I'm State Senator David Brock Smith, represent Senate District 1, which is southwest Oregon, and Curry Kusen Douglas County, southwest Oregon's Fish Farm and Forestry District. And I come to you in opposition to Senate Bill 702. I would, I would like to remind us all, as we move forward with testimony, that the testimony be truthful to the best of the ability, as we always should be. It is illegal for anyone under the age of 21 to purchase vaping products in the state of Oregon. We did that many years ago. In fact, if I remember correctly, we also banned any action figure advertising or anything that would entice youth to use tobacco or vaping tobacco in the, in the years leading up to today in this building. I'm not proud of the fact that I smoked tobacco for 30 years in, in my lifetime, and if it wasn't for the opportunity, I feel, to switch to a vaping system, I would still be smoking tobacco to this day. My father smoked, my late father smoked the majority of his life, and so I guess I was introduced to it as a young age. I'm not proud of it, and frankly, I'm not proud of the fact that I still use a nicotine delivery system. But that said, as a 48-year-old state senator in the state of Oregon, I should darn well be able to. I understand the issues with regards to youth utilizing these products, but we've already made it illegal for youth to utilize these products. A youth cannot go into a market, for example, and purchase a ZYN. It is behind the counter. They must show ID in order to do so, although it was testified earlier that that is not the case. So I, I will finish with, I, I am very concerned, as when we had this topic conversation in 2023, and look forward to the subsequent referral to joint ways and means of the over $200 million hole we will put in our healthcare system in this state. So with that, I'll end, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Great, I'm going to call to the, to the desk, Dr. Erica Moseson, Danielle Gonzalez, and Jennifer Little. Oh, wow. More props. I'm going to eat a cinnamon bear.
Do I just start? Okay. Yes. Chair Reynolds, Vice Chair Anderson, and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Erica Moseson, speaking in support of SB 702. I'm a lung and ICU doctor at Legacy Health, a past president of the Oregon Thoracic Society, and the mother of three wonderful young children, one of whom is here today with her class. I care for people suffering from diseases caused by tobacco every day, whether in the clinic, seeing me for asthma, COPD, lung cancer, and more, or dying of those and other diseases such as heart attacks and strokes in the intensive care unit. Most of the patients I see want to quit and have made multiple attempts to do so. I want to do everything I can to help them. I usually recommend starting with something safer than e-cigarettes, because e-cigarettes are not safe. We do all certainly hope that they are safer than combustible cigarettes, which kill around half of their lifetime users. If my patient does decide that an e-cigarette is right for them, I am supportive, but advise avoiding flavored products because the flavoring chemicals can damage the lungs. But we're not here today to talk about how hard it is to quit tobacco. We are talking about how easy it is to start and how we need to change that. Flavors are designed to attract new users to addictive chemicals. The most deadly of these flavors in sheer scale is menthol. Like inhaling a cough drop with every breath, menthol and synthetic non-flavored cooling agents numb the lungs and mask the natural coughing and anti-irritant response the lungs would normally have to inhaling toxins, such as those in tobacco smoke and e-cigarette vapor. This enables users to inhale more, inhale deeper and more frequently, and inhale more of the dissolved addictive substance in the vapor, such as nicotine. Among middle and high school students, menthol smoking is associated with greater smoking frequency and intention to continue smoking compared to non-menthol smoking. Youth menthol smokers have significantly higher level of measures of dependence, and initiation with a menthol-flavored cigarette is associated with a higher relative risk of daily smoking. In adults, menthol smoking is associated with a higher risk of death. Fortunately, the Oregon Legislature can save lives with SB 702. Menthols bans have led to increased quit rates in those addicted to menthol cigarettes. Following the 2017 ban on menthol in Canada, menthol smokers were more likely to attempt and succeed in quitting than non-menthol smokers. But it's not just menthol. Heating oils and chemicals over a metal coil and inhaling them, as is done with e-cigarettes, causes a host of changes in the lungs, affecting our defenses against infection and potentially causing deadly lung scarring. Adding flavoring chemicals to the mix increases that risk. It might be hard for people to understand why something safe to eat may not be safe to inhale. When we eat something, there's a wide variety of protections our body has on the way from our mouth to our bloodstream to detoxify potential threats. Most importantly, our liver has a host of protective enzymes. Our lungs have none of that. When we inhale something, it goes straight into our breathing tubes, our air sacs, and into the bloodstream. This is why people often prefer inhaling drugs to doing edibles. Other flavors are also risky and increase the risk of inhaling from these devices. Flavoring chemicals present in e-cigarettes from benzaldehyde and cherry or almond flavoring, cinamaldehyde and cinnamon flavors, and eugenol can all have a variety of different effects, from damaging the lungs, increasing the risk of asthma, and sensitizing people to allergic diseases. Allergies in Oregon are already miserable enough, especially for my patients. Furthermore, the chemicals put into these devices often change while sitting on the shelf over time to become even more toxic when eventually inhaled. Most concerning is the point of these flavors. They are designed to hook new users, especially youth, with developing brains most susceptible to addiction and to keep others using. The patients for whom I care, who have the hardest time quitting cigarettes, are those who started as children, taking a cigarette from a parent's pack. And today, I worry about a child trying a puff from the attractive candy mint e-cigarette that their parent thinks is hidden at home, starting their first steps on the journey to a lifelong addiction. I said when I started that we weren't here to talk about how hard it is to quit, but fortunately, a statewide flavor ban not only keeps people from getting addicted, it helps my patients break free of tobacco. After Massachusetts restricted the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes, not only did e-cigarette sales fall, but overall cigarette sales fell as well. Not only did youth use fall, adult cigarette smoking declined. The American Thoracic Society has found that flavors are an essential element of the tobacco industry's effort to hook people on tobacco products. No one inherently wants to use tobacco-flavored tobacco. Candy, fruit, or sweetened flavors lure youth to try tobacco products, mask the harshness of tobacco products, and enable naive users to consume tobacco products until they become addicted. Without characterizing agents, the lure of tobacco products would be significantly reduced, much to the benefit of public health. The Oregon Thoracic Society encourages passage of SB 702 to protect Oregonians from addiction and disease, save lives, and decrease overall healthcare expenditures in the state of Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Reynolds and Vice Chair Anderson, and the other members of the committee. I am Danielle Gonzalez. I am a district nurse with Beaverton School District, and I'm here on behalf of the school nurses, Oregon School Nurses Association, in favor of Senate Bill 702. I remember myself as a sixth grader writing a persuasive report on why we should ban cigarettes. I knew then that they were bad. I still know that those are bad, right? We all know that. And so I'm here 30 years later, in front of you today, hoping at the very least that we can protect a new generation of growing youth from being hooked to nicotine due to the harmful consequences of the flavored tobacco. In 2024, results from the annual National Youth Tobacco Survey found that eight out of 10 youth across the United States who use e-cigarettes or nicotine pouches use flavored nicotine products. Flavors, which we've already heard about, right, such as the juicy fruit flavors and the sweet candies and the icy mints, those not only sound good, but they are appealing to students who don't recognize that they can be bad for them, right? This was brought to my attention by my school substance use specialist, and we were talking, and she said that all of the students that she works with, who use e-cigarettes, use flavored tobacco, and every single one of those students tell her that they come back to the e-cigarette because of the vibrancy of the flavor. They don't even recognize that they're addicted because of the nicotine. They are just going back to it because they love the sweet flavor. It tastes so good to them, right? They crave that flavor. That's what they're saying to her. They crave the flavor. They don't recognize that they're craving the nicotine, that their brain is craving the nicotine. So, in fact, these flavors are set up to trick the kids into thinking that they're just vaping flavored water, right? Or that there's no harm in smoking it because it tastes and smells like food. And on the contrary, research we've heard already shows that the health effects of the flavored tobacco, just the flavoring is bad for the lungs, right? But there's a whole host of other things in there, like heavy metals, there's ultrafine particles, chemicals, organic compounds, that are not good for your body either. It's not good for even the people who are exposed to the exhaled air. So we have these kids that are, you know, vaping in the bathrooms, and then other kids come in, they're unfortunately inhaling that. It's not good for the other children either. So I want to talk a little bit also about the nicotine and how that directly affects the brain. What nicotine does is it increases the neurotransmitters that are responsible for feelings of happiness. And so while our kids might feel this immediate sense of elation from the nicotine, and they might think that it's helping their body and their mind relax, the flavored tobacco is just a way to sneak that nicotine in and hook our children's brains. When the nicotine wears off, there's a profound sense of sadness that creates this loop of addiction where you have to keep using the product in order to continue to feel happy. And with all these ups and downs in the brain, the nicotine also has the effect of creating or causing depression or making anxiety worse. Being a district nurse, one of my largest concerns is youth mental health. I see students every single day who aren't able to access their education because of anxiety or depression getting in the way. And students who've been hooked by flavored tobacco are now dealing with addiction, which can have a worsening effect on depression and anxiety, making it extremely difficult to be present and focused in their education. It's not hard to imagine why there's almost equally the same number of students in health surveys who report smoking as there are who report mental health concerns. But I have to say, it is hard to see our next generation of kids battling every day just to get through the day and learn. The students in my high school who want to quit report that their addiction started in eighth grade. That's before they even get into high school, and they are already addicted. And we know from state and national surveys that the uptake in smoking increases throughout high school. So not only are we seeing that our students of, not, and not only that, but we're seeing that our students of color are disproportionately affected by flavored tobacco addiction as well. And of the students who recognize that they want to quit, and they even have the resources to be able to do so, 88% of them are not able to, at least on the first try. It might take multiple tries, but they're not able to quit easily. So now we have this problem of our young teenagers who might not even been in high school yet, who are battling with an addiction that might not only take away their ability to be a child, to learn and to grow effectively, but it's going to have lasting effects into their adult lives.
I so hate to interrupt you. We have 88 folks registered to testify. So, and I will say, moving forward, if we can, and I'm really thrilled to have you here, and I'm a big fan of school nurses, but if we can.
Move on. Yes, I'm, I'm all done. So I just urge you to protect our youth and the next generation and vote to ban flavored tobacco in Oregon.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Reynolds and other members of the Senate Early Childhood and Behavioral Health Committee. I'm Jennifer Little. I'm the Klamath County Public Health Director.
Nice.
And I am also here today to support Senate Bill 702. My first job in public health over a decade ago was as the Tobacco Prevention Coordinator, and the issues I was dealing with 10 years ago are the same issues I'm dealing with today. It's flavored tobacco that's hooking our kids and hindering adults' attempts to quit. Tobacco use continues to be the number one cause of preventable disease and death in this country. So I'm not going to spend time on statistics. Other people, I'm sure, will do that for me. Some people already have. So I'm just going to tell you what I'm seeing on the local level. So we've seen a few examples already, but this is my tobacco candy jar. Everything in here is a flavored tobacco product. We know about these flavors are, and yes, adults like flavors too, but these colorful packaging and flavors give the illusion of fun and safety to kids, and it also, like this person here said, it really helps, it's hard to quit when people are still addicted to these. So my staff and I get calls all the time from concerned parents that their kids are using vapes, which are becoming harder and harder to identify because they're made to look like thumb drives and they're easily hidden. Parents and teachers are contacting us because students are sneaking vapes into classrooms, they're sneaking them onto the buses and into the bathrooms. And the scariest and saddest part of this story is we used to just get calls from junior high and high schools, and now we're getting calls from elementary schools. Let me say it again, elementary schools. So over right here is a bin of just a little sample of confiscated vapes from the schools. What do you notice about them? They're colorful, they're small. Schools are drug-free properties, and the schools are doing the best they can to help students stay drug-free, but sadly, they really are at their wits' ends, and students are being suspended, doing, due to repeated vaping offenses during school. And what's worse is these students often think vapes are safe, like you were saying, but then when my, my staff members meet with them on small groups and 101, they do admit that they are in fact addicted, and they say it would be really gross to use non-flavored vapes. Nicotine addiction in youth can lead to a lifetime of addiction, and when cravings strike, they're unable to concentrate on their schoolwork. So what seems like maybe is a minor issue, flavored tobacco. So what seems like maybe is a minor issue, flavored tobacco, it's a legal substance for adults to purchase, actually has tremendous negative effects on academic achievement and on lifelong health outcomes. This has to stop. Education is not enough. We need strong policy change to rid our state of deadly tobacco products that are addicting our youth, and they're killing our adult community members. I would also encourage you to look at the results of the tobacco retail license inspections that are happening across the state. Stores are doing the best they can, but youth are purchasing in the stores, and they're getting these products, or they're getting them from other people who are purchasing it for them. We need to stand up against big tobacco, quit listening to their deceitful excuses. Also, votes on this bill will count towards your individual scores on the Coalition of Local Health Officials 2025 Public Health Scorecard. So if that's important to you, please vote yes on Senate Bill 702 banning flavored tobacco in Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for traveling some farther than others. Just, we will acknowledge that, but appreciate you all being here. Yes, oh, I am so sorry. Yes, of course.
Thank you so much. Could I just ask perhaps you or another physician or public health official?
Sure.
How quickly does a person become addicted to nicotine?
It can happen as early as a month or less than a month. So within, if they're using it a couple times a week, within a month, they can get addicted.
I think that's what I've seen with my patients as well. It's considered one of the most highly addictive substances on the planet. Do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I wouldn't have anything to add. I think one of the things that's really tricky about nicotine is it's something that you can kind of be doing all the time. Like, I have patients who can smoke three packs a day, and that's hard to do with other. I think so there's a lot of what-aboutism on this topic. People are like, well, what about, you know, whatever, marijuana, like, you know? The thing is, it's like, it's really hard to do anything else this addictive all day, every day, and still like walk a straight line until your next class. And so I think that's one of the things that just makes it so hard to quit. Like, I, you know, I'm here on a day off, I'm not paid to be here, you know what I mean? Like, I'm here because I have just too many patients who are like the former senator. I mean, it's heartbreaking, like, people who are strong-willed, good people, really, really want to break free, and they can't. And the ones who can't, got them as kids, often from, sometimes buying them directly from corner stores despite the laws, but often from parents. It's a generational thing that we just got to stop.
Thank you. Thank you. Good question. Great. I will be calling up another panel, and then we'll be, and then I'll just be honest, we'll be starting like oppose support, oppose support panels. And at that point, we'll be going down to two-minute testimony. But coming forward, I'm going to ask for Musin Farah to come up, Kayson Shi, and Jennifer Forsyth, and I will, oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. It was on, we're, sorry, before you all come up, State Rep Cyrus Javady, and I apologize. I saw you there, and then I-
You let me out the-
Yeah, yeah. But you're on deck, the three names I called, you're on deck. Thank you so much for being here, Representative Javady.
Welcome. Thank you, Senator. Sorry I was late. Chair Reynolds and Vice Chair Senator Anderson, how you doing? And the rest of the committee, my name is Representative Cyrus Javady. I represent House District 32, which is Oregon's North Coast. Nicotine addiction among our youth, as you've heard, isn't just a health issue, it's an economic and it's a social crisis. The fiscal impact is clear, $200 million, but the real costs, those go far beyond any budget line. We know that over 2.5 million middle-aged, middle and high school students are using e-cigarettes. That means lower health, that means higher healthcare costs, lower academic performance and lost productivity down the line. Addiction robs young people of their best years, limiting their potential before they even get started. And the long-term health consequences are severe. Nicotine use, particularly in smokeless vaping forms, increases the risk of oral, throat, and lung cancers, as well as heart disease and stroke. Treating these diseases isn't just a personal burden, it's a massive strain on our healthcare system, costing billions annually in medical expenses and lost workforce productivity. Oral cancer alone has a five-year survival rate of just 57%, and treatments often lead to lifelong complications. From a conservative perspective, this is about more than just money. A strong society depends on individuals making responsible choices, but addiction undermines that freedom. Once hooked, kids aren't making a choice anymore. The substance is making it for them. Yes, this issue has a big price tag, but the biggest losses can't be measured in dollars. They're measured in lost opportunities, diminished futures, and the long-term impact on families and communities. If we want the next generation to thrive, we need to address this issue head-on. On a personal note, I, when I was a teenager living in Massachusetts, moved to a new neighborhood, and the two kids that ended up becoming my friends both smoked. I was 14, they were not quite 16. We used to go down to the grocery store, you used to be able to buy cigarettes right there at the counter, but right before the counter, you didn't have to actually go through the cashier. My job was to buy a pack of gum while I distracted the cashier, as my friends would steal their cigarettes so they could smoke. And then we'd spend the rest of the night walking around while they smoked, and I would hold a cigarette because I just desperately wanted to be cool like them. What kept me from smoking was asthma. I could hardly breathe when I would play sports, and I thought that if I smoked, it'd probably get even worse. But back then, it was a cool thing. Today, it's still a cool thing for kids to get, to do, which leads to their addiction. And I think whatever we can do to make sure kids don't get addicted is a good thing. And I encourage you, as you think about the cost of that, of what this bill may cost in lost revenues, will make up hopefully in better outcomes for our children. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Representative. I appreciate you being here. I will call to the four, as we said, Musin Farah, Kayson Shi, Jennifer Forsyth, and if you could try to cut your comments, I'm so sorry, I didn't realize how popular this, popular or not so popular this bill was. Except, I'm not going to, whatever. Please go ahead and get started. State your name for the record, and thank you so much for being here.
Hello, Chair Reynolds, Vice Chair Anderson, and members of the committee. My name is Musin Farah. I'm 16 years old, and I live in a 10th school in Portland, Oregon. I'm here today as a youth ambassador for Upstream Public Health and the Tobacco-Free Coalition of Oregon to express my strong support for Senate Bill 702, which would end the sale of flavored tobacco products. This issue is deeply personal to me because I've seen firsthand how flavored tobacco traps young people in addiction. One of my closest friends started vaping when we were younger. At first, it didn't seem like a big deal, just a few puffs of something that smelled like mango or cotton candy. We all thought it was harmless. But over time, it became something he couldn't go without. I watched as he went from casually vaping to needing it first thing in the morning, between classes, and even when we were just hanging out. He tried to quit multiple times, but the cravings always pulled him back. It was heartbreaking to see someone I cared about struggle with addiction he would never have developed if not for the sweet flavors that made vaping seem fun and harmless. The truth is, these products like vapes and hookah aren't designed to help adults quit smoking, they're designed to hook young people. The tobacco industry knows that if they get us to start young, we're more likely to become lifelong customers. In my community, I've also seen how hookah use is widespread among young Muslims. Many believe common myths such as the idea that hookah is halal because the water filters out toxins and tobacco, or that they're just smoking water or coals, not tobacco. The reality is that hookah contains harmful chemicals, and smoking it indoors exposes children to secondhand and thirdhand smoke, which lingers in furnitures, curtains, and clothing. This is why Senate Bill 702 matters. If flavored tobacco had been banned years ago, my friend and many others like him may not be struggling with addiction today. This bill is about protecting the next generation from going through what he did. I urge you to, I urge you to support Senate Bill 702 and take a stand against these predatory tactics. Oregon's youth deserve better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Forsyth, and I live in Portland. I'm a mom of three children and have been a volunteer with Parents Against Vaping for several years. I'm here in support of Senate Bill 702. Vaping has affected all of my children in different ways with the most significant impact on my youngest child. My son was in ninth or 10th grade when the vaping craze really took off. He started vaping because of the sweet candy flavors and because everybody was doing it. After just one or two hits, he was hooked, and within a month, he was addicted. Like many of his friends, he believed vapes were just harmless water vapor, and because they came in fun, kid-friendly flavors like mango and bubble gum to birthday cake, they seemed harmless. Vapes are everywhere, from social media ads to gas station counters, often placed right next to candy, which makes it all the more appealing for a vulnerable teen. Tobacco and vape companies know what they are doing, the marketing and flavors are specifically designed to appeal to kids. They know that the youth are easy targets, and they're doing everything they can to reel them in. My son is proof of that. The impact it had on my son was profound. After struggling with vaping for over six years, he finally quit at the age of 22. But the toll it has taken on him is heartbreaking. I saw his health decline, poor appetite, stomach aches, difficulty breathing, loss of focus, and his motivation and self-esteem plummeted. His schoolwork and relationships with our family also suffered. And as a parent, it's gut-wrenching to watch your child struggle with addiction, knowing how difficult it is for them to break free from something that's so accessible and so addictive. My son has faced side effects for years, and I do fear he'll live with the consequences of vaping for a very long time. This isn't just a problem in our family, it's a nationwide crisis. Millions of young people have been duped by the fun and fruity flavors and have gotten hooked on vaping. That's why I'm in full support of removing flavored nicotine products from the market and making it harder for kids to access them. It's time to stop letting the tobacco industry profit off the health of our children. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good afternoon, Chair Reynolds, Vice Chair Anderson, and members of the committee. Thank you for the chance to speak today. My name is Kayson Shi. I'm a senior at Lake Oswego High School and a third-year member of the Lake Oswego Youth Leadership Council. I'm here today to urge you to support Senate Bill 702 and end flavored tobacco sales. With my limited time, I'd like to share a story about how a single pair of shoes brought this issue to my attention and why it must be addressed. About a year ago, I excused myself during my morning math class to use the restroom. While I was in a stall, someone else walked into the stall beside me, and I didn't recognize who it was, I could only see their shoes. It was a distinct beat-up pair of Nike Air Forces with a very distinct shoelace pattern. The faint hum of an e-cigarette inhaler was unforgettable, and the strong artificial strawberry smell filled the room. I remember how sweet it was. It was too sweet. It was so sweet that it almost masked the nicotine swirling in the air, almost. Yet, this wasn't what piqued my concern. After all, this wasn't the first time this has happened to me. Countless times, I've been in the bathroom and someone vaped right next to me. It was hours later when I passed the same pair of shoes in the hall. I looked up, and I was shocked. I was shocked to see that the peer wearing those shoes, the peer who just vaped earlier that morning, was the same peer I had known for years. The same kid I grew up with and the same kid who invited me to a seven-year-old birthday party. I would have never been able to tell that he used an e-cigarette. I took it like a slap in the face. That friend served as my reminder that addiction isn't limited to any one person. It can happen to the friend you've known since elementary school, the kid who once invited you to his birthday party. It can happen to anybody. Addiction simply does not care. This is why flavored tobacco is so dangerous. They're engineered products of addiction and designed to trap unsuspecting and vulnerable individuals before they fully understand its risks. People often attribute e-cigarette use to the problem children or the bad kids, but I'm here to tell you that there is no such thing. There are only those who weren't protected or taught early enough to defend themselves from the predatory nature of flavored tobacco. Today, I urge you to support Senate Bill 702 and end the sale of flavored tobacco. As a lawmaker, this is for our state's youth. As a parent, this is for your children, and as a neighbor, this is for your community. By passing Senate Bill 702, you're not just doing your job, but you're making a promise. You're promising to protect youth and students like myself from exploitative industry tactics that disguise addiction with flavor. You're promising to break the cycle before it even starts. I urge you, I beg you, to make the choice that reflects what it means to be an Oregonian. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kayson, do you mind taking those products with you when you go? I just, not with you. Or maybe Dr. Mosesen, if you wouldn't mind. And thank you so much for being here. You're clearly too young. Little, I'm glad we can laugh a little, this is a serious topic. We are now moving to, I'm going to be doing a mix, we're moving to kind of the pro-con discussion. I'll be privileging people who are in person, except for a few folks that I've been reached out about. So next, we will have, and I want to make sure I get his name right in this, I'm sorry, Dr. Brian Urquola, who's joining us remotely. Thank you for being here, Dr. Urquola. Thank you. Sorry for the mix-up, I hadn't seen you on our list, but happy you're here.
All good? Yep.
Great. For the record, please state your name, and then we look forward to hearing from you.
Sure. Good afternoon, my name is Dr. Brian Urquola, Director of Regulatory Science at Swedish Match North America, affiliate of PMI. I've studied nicotine and tobacco for about 25 years, holding positions at the NIH and the FDA Center for Tobacco Products. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss our opposition to SB 702. This proposal would ban flavored tobacco products in a rejection of the scientific experts at the FDA, paints all tobacco products as equal risk when scientific consensus suggests lower levels of risk for smoke-free products, and leaves the more than 350,000 adults who smoke in Oregon without the ability to make better choices for their well-being. In early January 2025, the FDA determined, after nearly five years of careful review of the underlying science, that ZYN nicotine pouches, which to clarify are not made from synthetic nicotine, but tobacco-derived nicotine, were, quote, "appropriate for the protection of public health." There were several reasons for this decision. One, they have significantly lower levels of harmful chemicals than other tobacco products on the market. Two, the evidence demonstrated that adults who use cigarettes and/or smokeless tobacco products completely switch to these pouches, and that the availability of the product in a variety of flavors is critical to facilitate this switching. And three, youth use of nicotine pouches remains relatively low. Under this proposal, a vast majority of these and other federally authorized smoke-free products would be banned. The market would then be almost entirely the most harmful product, the combusted cigarette. Initiatives such as SB 702 have been tried elsewhere, and time and time again, researchers have found that flavor bans on smoke-free products have significant unintended consequences. They decrease the appeal of these products for legal-age smokers, which hinders switching. They increase illicit trade, and often, they lead to increases in use of combusted cigarettes. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, youth use of any tobacco product has dropped 65% since 2019, when the age of purchase was increased to 21, a move we supported. However, over 8,000 Oregonians lose their life each year to combusted cigarette smoking, and SB 702 will all but take away important smoke-free options from the hundreds of thousands of adult smokers in the state, not to mention those that have already switched. Oregon has always been a champion of harm reduction. SB 702 simply tells adults who smoke that they can either quit, or they can die. I strongly urge this committee to make the compassionate choice, the choice supported by science and the FDA, and reject SB 702. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will now bring up two folks, I'm going to be privileging folks who are here in person, except for, I said, except for some invited folks. I'm going to bring up, and I'm just going in the list that people registered, Mr. Richard Burke and Mr. John Harper, if you can come up to the dais. And I'm going to have to hold you to two minutes, I apologize for that.
Do my best.
Is John Harper here? Are you John Harper?
I'm Richard Burke.
You're Richard Burke, okay, great. Go ahead and get started.
Very good. Madam Chair, members of the committee, my name is Richard Burke. I'm Executive Director of the 21+ Tobacco and Vaper Retail Association of Oregon. We're an association of 73 stores, three distributors, and a manufacturer, and our stores only allow people 21 or older to be on premises. Now, the British National Health Service has a Swap to Stop Program, where they give free flavored vapes to adults who turn in cigarettes. It's because they know that it is a relative, or it is a net health benefit to move to vapes. And I'll tell you something, unintended consequences. Vapes are bad, let's ban them. What could possibly go wrong, right? Well, if I'm a member of the black market, I would love 702, because you are giving me a monopoly on vaping products that would appeal to children. And by the way, I'll lace them with fentanyl and do- And by the way, I'll lace them with fentanyl and do other things, and I will have a monopoly. What they didn't tell you when they mentioned Massachusetts before was that, yes, official sales rates went down, but black market went up, smuggling went up, people switched from adults to tobacco. And this has happened in San Francisco. This is not a good way to go. There are a lot of opportunities, short of bans, that can stop this. I have some testimony here with independent documentation linked that's been uploaded, and I provide a copy to each of your desks, things that can make it harder for kids to get these age-restricted products that do not result in the unintended consequences that you will have and would not blow a hole in Oregon's budget. If you really want to stop kids from getting these products, you will have no better partner than us. We will work with you. But this kind of a ban will be detrimental to all of us. Thank you very much for your consideration. Are there any questions?
I have a question, if I can.
Yes. So, we've heard from students, and the narrative is that kids are buying or getting these in stores, but you just said that your organization does not allow anyone on the premises.
No one is allowed on premises unless they're 21 or older.
And you may not be the person to answer the question, but where are... How are kids getting this? I understand that you can always have the proxy 22-year-old go buy you something. That seems like...
Well, it's poor training is one element of it. A lot of these are obtained at gas stations, convenience stores, grocery stores.
So they're not doing what's legally appropriate?
Well, they're not...
Because it is illegal to...
The people who are under... Yeah, it's because largely, poor training, I think, is most of it. I don't think Safeway is out to sell these to minors, but I think it's just poor training on the part of the clerks. But, you know, there are a lot of things. Only people who are 21 or older should be able to be a clerk to sell these products. Okay? They should require IDs for everyone and devices that check for fake IDs.
For serving alcohol.
Yes, there should be, you know, if you absolutely have to have a ban, you could take flavors and candy flavors and restrict them to 21-plus. There are so many things you can do short of a ban that will not realize the unintended consequences. And I thank you very much for your time. I'm sorry I went over.
Can I just ask one more question, Chair? And again, I don't know if this is for you, but are these available online to purchase, like through Amazon or whatnot? I don't know if...
They're available for, through a variety of sites, including a number of dark websites. Those are the dangerous ones. A lot of this comes from China. It's unregulated. You can either have this market under the control of society, or you can put it under the control of killers and social predators. You get to choose one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. So, John Harper, not here. Matthew Warren, Brett Shimomura. Great. I'm sorry, we'll have to hold you to two minutes. Thank you for being here. Thank you, and be sure to state your name for the record.
Chair Reynolds and members of the committee, my name is Matthew Warren. I am the General Manager of Fuel Options LLC located in the Portland metro area. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to talk today. I am here today to ask you to oppose Senate Bill 702. Retailers like my stores are the front line to keep youth from accessing tobacco products. We take this responsibility very seriously. We train our employees and scan customer IDs before every purchase of tobacco products to ensure that no one under 21 years of age can purchase them. We also pay for a program where We Card does random audits, and we reward our employees for successfully refusing sales to minors. We are proud of our efforts and invite you to visit our stores if you would like to learn more. Just like we have a crucial role in preventing youth access to tobacco products, retailers should have a meaningful role in creating tobacco policy. Oregon retailers like us want to do the right thing. I believe there is a better path forward than total prohibition. The 2024 National Youth Tobacco Survey shows that illicit disposable vapor products are the products that are most frequently used by youth. Instead of banning legal flavored tobacco products, we should solve the illicit vapor problem and remove the illegal products from the market. We should implement a simple solution, requiring manufacturers of vapor products to register with the state and certify their products comply with federal regulation. I believe we can work together to solve the illicit vapor problem by supporting regulated businesses and legal harm reduction solutions that have been proven to work. Please vote no on Senate Bill 702. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you John Harper?
I am.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I just was... People were saying we need an on-deck warning. Thank you for being here. I'll have Mr. Harper go next, if that's okay?
Sure.
And we're... Oh, do you... We could have, we could have the... Yeah, okay.
Hustle from down.
Yes. I really apologize for this, sir. And yeah, go ahead, sir. Yeah.
Chairwoman and members of the committee, my name is Brett Shimomura. I am the Assistant General Manager of Fuel Options LLC located in the Portland metro area, covering three stores. I am here today with my colleagues to ask you to oppose Senate Bill 702. Being mindful of time, I would like to reiterate that we take our responsibilities to card every customer and prevent anyone under the age of 21 from purchasing tobacco products as a core value at Fuel Options, and we are proud of our efforts. We know that prohibition does not work. It did not work for alcohol, did not work for marijuana, and it won't work for banning legal flavored tobacco products. Moreover, this ban would undermine public health by pushing the sales of these products to the illegal market where criminals don't care about checking IDs. The two states that have enacted flavor bans, California and Massachusetts, have seen customers shifting their purchasing patterns to neighboring states and to the illicit markets. Prohibition has been shown to be expensive and ineffective. Oregon should not follow suit. Thank you for your time today.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. You good?
I'm gonna have to be. I was at this door and sent me down.
Yeah, I apologize for that, sir.
No problem. Sorry about that.
And we have two-minute warning, and state your name for the record.
Okay. My name is John Harper, and I'm the proud owner of four 21-plus stores, the first of which was founded 30 years ago. Over the years, my business has grown, and I now employ 40 hard-working individuals. I'm not here lobbying for myself, but for my employees that have built this business. I take pride in offering living wage jobs, affordable housing options, 401K matching retirement plan. These benefits have allowed my employees to build their futures with confidence. In fact, the average tenure of my staff is nine years, a testament to the strong foundation that we built together. Over the last 30 years, we've maintained a great working relationship with the Oregon Department of Revenue, their compliance unit, and more recently, the Oregon Health Authority with their tobacco retail licensing program to ensure responsible business practices. Retailers like myself serve as the first line of defense against underage youth, and I speak for all responsible licensed retailers when I say we take immense pride in our compliance. We're committed to preventing youth access, and we fully support strong enforcement and harsher penalties for those who violate the law. The Oregon TRL program has already made a real difference in ensuring accountability, and we welcome even greater enforcement efforts to further strengthen our industry. However, Senate Bill 702 would devastate an industry that employs thousands of Oregonians and supports their families. Our industry provides stable, long-term employment, helping families thrive in a time of economic uncertainty. I encourage you to not only consider youth protection, but also the broader impact on family structures, financial stability, and their jobs that their jobs provide. Think about the bigger picture. According to both the FDA and OHA, youth smoking is at a historic low. Give credit where credit is due to e-cigarettes, non-tobacco alternatives, and Oregon's strong TRL enforcement program. You've already obliterated big tobacco in the state. Take pride in what you've accomplished. I urge you to vote no on Senate Bill 702 and take a step backward with a decision would undo years of progress. Let's focus on continued enforcement and responsible regulation, not an outright ban that harms small businesses, costs jobs, and harms families. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your... Sorry about the sprint.
Oh, no, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
Thank you.
Any questions? Great. I'm gonna call to the desk... Well, we have Dr. Gardner, who's here virtually. We have Kira Riddella, and we have Melissa Belmonte. And then I'm gonna do an on-deck panel so that folks don't have to dash so much to get here. But if this panel of three persons can, if they're not in the room, can make their way to the room. Tara Calkins, Sohal Sam Vasani, and Mochtaba Tajik. But for now, we have Dr. Gardner joining us remotely. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you for having me.
We're gonna hold you to two minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, I'm Dr. Philip Gardner. I'm one of the co-chairs of the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council. We're a national organization involved in the fight to get menthol off the market since it was the only one left on in 2009. I want to strongly support Senate Bill 702 and urge this committee to take the first step in making Oregon the third state to ban the sale of menthol cigarettes. This is especially concerning for folks in the African-American community. We should be clear that they got all, all other flavored cigarettes were removed from the market in 2009, but not menthols. Menthols disproportionately affect African-Americans. We have data that shows between 1980 and 2018, over 157,000 premature deaths from menthol cigarettes. We actually have data on this. The main vector of death and disease into the black community are menthol cigarettes. People are saying that we should wait on the FDA. I would suggest to you that the FDA has been dragging their feet for the last 16 years, and since even Trump has gotten in the office, they've moved the bill that was with the OMB back to the Food and Drug Administration. We can't wait any longer for this. This is about saving Oregonians' lives. I strongly encourage you to pass Senate Bill 702. Let's put health above industry profits. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you joining us. And then, yeah, please state your name for the record. We have two minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Senator Reynolds and committee members. My name is Melissa Belmonte. I am the Latino Health Policy and Advocacy Coordinator at Oregon Latino Health Coalition. Oregon Latino Health Coalition is a statewide health and advocacy organization where our mission is to advance the health of Latinos in Oregon through policy, advocacy, and prevention. Today, we're here to support Senate Bill 702, which will protect our children and communities by ending the sale of flavored tobacco in Oregon. Our organization is a partner with Oregon Health Authority's Tobacco Prevention Education Program. Our tobacco program addresses the ongoing impacts of commercial tobacco use in the Latino community in various ways. For instance, we develop and implement workshops in Spanish focused on prevention education of commercial tobacco use in the Latino community. Also, we collaborate across the state with community-based organizations, health departments, and other health equity champions to distribute statewide culturally and linguistically appropriate resources. These efforts aim to advance local and statewide tobacco prevention policies and recommendations that address Latino health disparities. Hence why I'm here today with my student that's also part of our Latinx Youth Leadership Program. Our team has learned many things from the community-centered work that we do in the Latino community. For example, while our parents in the workshops are fairly familiar with the effects of cigarettes on their health, many were very shocked to find out the levels of nicotine in these electronic devices, and also how something that smells and tastes like peaches could be so harmful to our health. In addition, the youth that participated in our workshops attributed using flavored tobacco as a coping mechanism for their anxiety and stress, hence, again, just tying it to their mental health. Overall, nearly 1 in 10 Hispanic high school students are current users of any tobacco products, with e-cigarettes being the most common among high school students. We want, we don't want youth to be long-term clients of tobacco companies. We want them to live long and fruitful lives, and we hope that you can support Senate Bill 702. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great. Thank you for being here.
Hello, Chair Reynolds, Vice Chair Anderson, and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Kira Riddella. I am the Health Equity and Community Partnership Director for the Coalition of Community Health Clinics. I'm born and raised here in Portland, Oregon, and in support of Senate Bill 702. As a public health professional who loves our family and community, it hurts to know that the commercial tobacco and nicotine use is number-one cause of preventable deaths and disease in Oregon, specifically heart disease, lung disease, and strokes, and that flavored tobacco and nicotine products make it easier for people to start smoking and harder to quit. And that's all by design. It's known that the tobacco industry creates products with highly addictive nicotine and cancer-causing chemicals, and then, when they market those substances in the names like Cool Mint, Blue Raz Ice, and Watermelon Bubble Gum, they package them in small devices that are colorful and fit in a palm and a hand, and are going after our children. Most all adult smokers say they started before the age of 21. And here in Oregon, as we've heard before, our youth are using e-cigarettes, and those that are smoking are using flavored tobacco. I see it in my neighborhoods. I see it in the youth out on the streets. My children, who are teens in high school, complain about walking to the bathroom and walking through a fruity cloud of smoke. And that's all by design. Menthol was the first flavored tobacco product created because it made cigarettes taste smoother and reduced the harshness. And menthol was a flavor choice for my uncles. I had three uncles, and they all started smoking when they were in their youth. They used to tell me not to smoke. I remember this as a kid. I remember them being outside in a circle, coughing, smoking almost every hour at our family gatherings. And then, as an adult, I remember watching my oldest uncle as he laid in his hospice bed with fluid on his lungs, dying from COPD. Again, this is all by design. As a community health worker, we see the predatory practices targeting our youth, targeting our communities. We know the effect that it has on our families and communities, and we've organized in our counties. We're doing our part to try to stop the predatory practices, but we need y'all's help. We are working to support our families, your families. You can contribute to that by helping in the sale of flavored tobacco nicotine products in Oregon by supporting Senate Bill 702. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you both for being here. I did the on-deck. Is Tara Calkins, Sohal Sam Vasani, and Mochtaba Tajik here? Great, thank you for being here. Go ahead and get started. State your name for the record. Thank you.
You go first, okay. Yes, chair and members of the committee. My name is Sam Vasani. I'm the owner of Spiddy Market, Hall Street Market, and Steppin Market located in Portland in Senator Gore's district. I'm also a proud father of two, and I take my responsibility as a father and business owner very seriously. I'm here today to ask you to vote no on Senate Bill 702 because I believe it is not good for Oregon. As a business owner and a father, I'm very busy taking time out of my day to drive to the Capitol. It's not easy, but this is important, and I value the opportunity to be a part of the conversation. Thank you. Tobacco products make up approximately 35% of in-store sales, and menthol, cigarettes, flavored dip, and other flavored tobacco and nicotine product also make up an important part of the category. Prohibition does not work. Banning legal products will not make them go away. A ban would not only harm our business and lawful businesses like mine, but would increase crime and create an even bigger illegal market for tobacco in our state by increasing demand for bootleg products sold through illegal channels. An unregulated and uncontrolled illegal market for tobacco would give youth easier access to this product. My business makes every effort to keep tobacco and vapor products away from kids. Retailers are on the front line of conducting ID checks and age verification every day. Reasonable restrictions to keep tobacco and vapor products from getting into kids' hands make sense, but banning flavored tobacco products for adults 21 and older does not solve the problem and only create others. Sales of this product would shift from law-abiding retailers like me to illegal sellers that don't check ID. Please support Oregon's small business and our effort to prevent youth access to tobacco product by opposing Senate Bill 702. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good timing.
Chairman and members of the committee, my name is Tara Calkins. I am the manager of Fast Track Loaded and Located in Milwaukee, part of Fuel Options LLC. I am here today with my colleagues to ask you to oppose Senate Bill 702. I will keep my testimony brief as I know there are many voices to be heard on this important issue. Fast Track is a neighborhood store with long-term employees. We value responsibility and appreciate the opportunity to share our voice as part of the legislative process. Senate Bill 702 does not allocate any funds to address the issue of illegal street sales of flavored tobacco products. It is difficult to comprehend why lawmakers would ban licensed businesses, which verify the age of customers from selling these products, while assuring that law enforcement won't take the action against those selling the same products on the streets near our stores. The ongoing economic crisis has hit Oregon, Oregonians hard. Local convenience stores like ours that offer essential items such as bread, milk, and water are being forced to close. This proposal only adds the economic difficulties unnecessarily. Thank you for your time today. Please oppose Senate Bill 702.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Reynolds and committee. My name is Mojtaba Tajik. I'm representing my family owns three stores located in Portland area. I'm here today to ask you to oppose Senate Bill 702. My brother immigrated here in 2014 and bought his first store less than two years ago. Now he's grown to business to include two more. This is a family business, and my brothers and I work hard to support each other and our employees and the community. Stores like ours are an important part of the neighborhood we operate in. We sell groceries, beverages, and wide assortment of household items. We are also the first line of defense when it comes to preventing kids from purchasing tobacco products. We take this responsibility very seriously. Youth tobacco use rates are at historic lows at a national smoking rate of 1.3%. The current economic crisis has hit Oregonians hard. Convenience stores like ours are closing. This proposal only unnecessarily compounds this economic hardship. Please vote no on Senate Bill 702. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here. That means a lot.
Could I ask just a quick question?
Yeah, of course. I'm sorry. Yes.
Just to you, the store owners, what percentage of sales, you might know, do these products make up in your stores? Would you have any idea?
It varies. All different stores are different, but approximately about 30 to 35% of total tobacco.
And do you also carry cigarettes, regular cigarettes?
Yes. All tobacco products is about 30 to 35%.
What's the difference there? Do you have any idea?
The regular tobacco and the vape is about 50/50, about like vapes and swishasweets and these other stuff over there.
And that would be a big, a big hit to your, to your bottom line.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I am calling up to the desk Tim Lynch, Dr. James Bishara, and Elizabeth Tomczek, if I'm saying that right, Tomczek. And then, on deck, I'm losing my place here, will be Colin Ra, and Danny Thompson, and Jonathan Polanski. Thank you. And, and please be sure to speak into the mic. Great.
Chair Reynolds and committee members, for the record, my name is Dr. James Bishara. I'm a pediatric cardiologist at OHSU Dornbecker Children's Hospital and a member of the Oregon Pediatric Society, the Oregon Chapter, the State Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. I'm providing comments today in support of Senate Bill 702 on behalf of the Oregon Pediatric Society. When most of us think about tobacco, we often think about the adult users, the heart disease, the lung disease, and the cancers caused by tobacco, and that tobacco is responsible for killing half of its users when used as directed. This draws our attention away from the source of the problem, and that is addiction to nicotine. Nicotine addiction is a disease that begins in children. 90% of adult users are addicted before they're 18, 95% before 21. This is because the developing adolescent brain is extremely susceptible to nicotine's addictive effects, so much so that the younger the age of first use, the more likely the child is to develop an addiction. And flavors are why children start using tobacco products. When asked, kids say they tried because of curiosity about flavors, and that makes up about, most start with, nine out of 10 start with a flavored tobacco product. When flavored tobacco is used, children use for longer sessions, they use more frequently, and are much more likely to continue using. All of these greatly increasing the risk of developing an addiction. The top reason why children cite for using tobacco products is, "It comes in the flavors I like." In addition, 80% say they would quit if they would, if there were no flavors. Flavors hook kids. Flavors are why they first try. Flavors are why they try again, and ultimately why they develop an addiction to nicotine, an addiction that begins in children. Thank you. Please support Senate Bill 702.
Thank you so much. Just want to note, fellow pediatrician, thank you, and thanks for being here, Dr. Bishara. Great, thank you.
Chair Reynolds, Vice Chair Anderson, members of the committee, I'm Dr. Elizabeth Tomczek. I'm a practicing dentist and the clinical site director at OHSU School of Dentistry General Practice Residency Program. I am here today in support of Senate Bill 702. In my work as a dentist, I have seen the dangers of tobacco use, both in the conventional forms and in other newer nicotine delivery mechanisms such as e-cigarettes. I can tell you that tobacco use has devastating effects on oral health. The effects may not always be immediate, but over time, tobacco use causes irreversible damage. While I am not a pediatric dentist, I see daily the outcome of starting tobacco products early. Patients who come through the hospital clinic with oral and lung cancers often report pack years that far outstrip their age. Frequently, they tell me they started young. Tobacco use is directly linked to gum disease, making the gingiva more susceptible to infection. The bacteria in the mouth thrive in an environment created by tobacco products, resulting in gum inflammation, bleeding, and if untreated, tooth loss. New flavored tobacco products, both smoked and oral, like ZYN Tabs, which have special detrimental effect on gingival tissues, increase the incidence of dual nicotine use. The nicotine and tar in tobacco products stain teeth, leading to yellowing and browning. This not only affects the appearance, but also weakens the tooth enamel over time, which increases the risk of cavities. The longer tobacco use continues, the harder it becomes to restore the natural whiteness and strength of teeth, often requiring costly and painful dental procedures. Flavored tobacco products make it harder for our youth to understand or recognize these long-term consequences to their health. In dentistry, we use flavored products in toothpaste and fluoride to convince kids to put stuff in their mouth that they wouldn't otherwise, to make them think it's a treat. That's exactly the same approach the tobacco industry is using with flavored products now, except with lifelong negative impacts. Oral health is closely interconnected with overall health, and the problems caused by tobacco use extend far beyond the mouth. These outcomes of long-term tobacco use, started at a young age, make oral health very difficult to manage, as well as affecting the rest of the body. The oral health of our kids matters. Don't let tobacco take it away. I urge your support for Senate Bill 702 to end the sale of flavored tobacco products. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Go ahead. State your name for the record.
Chair Reynolds and members of the Senate. I'm sorry. There we go. All right. Chair Reynolds and members of the Senate Committee in Early Childhood and Behavioral Health, I am Timothy Lynch, Public Health Administrator for Coos County and a doctor of Public Health Practitioner. I am here to present, to represent the beautiful South Coast and to share our overwhelming struggles with tobacco use and the incredible impact it's having on our community. As a public health director, I'm witnessing a growing number of community members suffering from long-term effects of early tobacco exposure, along with a troubling increase in children and young adults under the legal age who are following this path of addiction. Coos County has the second-highest smoking rate in Oregon, with 23.3% of adults smoking. Additionally, we have a higher cancer rate than much of the state. The economic impact of tobacco-related costs and the loss of productivity to our community is exceeding $114 million. Our youth observe many adults in the community using nicotine. While they are aware of the dangers of cigarette smoking and claim they would not smoke cigarettes themselves, they do not understand the potential harm of becoming addicted to nicotine through The young people on our, that we interviewed in our county who currently use vapes all stated that without flavors, they would not be vaping. Many of the vapes available to our community contain between 20,000 and 30,000 hits, meaning that 10 to 15 puffs on a vape can contain the same amount of nicotine as one cigarette. Students can easily consume the nicotine equivalent to three or four packs of cigarettes. As Chair Reynolds had talked about, some of the medical issues that occur with ADHD leading mental health as well, I won't cover that. You know much more than I do. But I do want to talk about some personal stories. I want you to support the Senate Bill 702. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, and I do want to remind everyone, you can submit written testimony. I've asked you to submit the rest of your testimony through the O-List, which stands for Oregon Legislative Information System. You have until 1:00 PM on Thursday to do so, which is 48 hours from the start of this meeting. I am going to call up the folks that I put on the on-deck, Colin Ra, Danny Thompson, and Jonathan Polanski, and then we will follow with our final panel for today, Dr. Glenn Galis, and Minal Basu, and Christina Bodimer. I know I'm botching all of those. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Please state your name for the record.
My name's Colin Ra. I'm the founder of, Chairman Reynolds and Vice Chair Anderson, thank you for your time today. My name's Colin Ra, founder of Emerald Vapers in Eugene, Oregon. I'm here in opposition of Senate Bill 702. I represent not only Emerald Vapers and its employees, but also thousands of adult Oregonians who have made the decision to switch from traditional cigarettes to vaping. The intention behind these bans is understandable, reducing youth vaping, but the reality is bans don't stop access. They shift it back to the, shift it to the black market, where unregulated, potentially dangerous products thrive. When Massachusetts enacted a similar ban, traditional cigarette sales increased and illicit vape markets grew. Oregon risks repeating the same mistake. For adult smokers, flavored vaping is a harm reduction tool. Studies show flavors play a crucial role in helping smokers transition away from deadly combustible cigarettes. If we take away legal, regulated options, many will return to smoking, undoing years of public health progress. This ban also devastates small businesses across Oregon. Vape shops are not big tobacco. We are local entrepreneurs, providing adults with a safe alternative. Many of us comply with strict ID laws, ensuring these products don't end up in the hands of minors, but a ban won't punish bad actors. It will only, oops, sorry, it will only hurt responsible businesses and send consumers to unregulated sources. A better solution, enforce existing age restrictions, increase penalties for illegal sales, and educate youth about the risks. But prohibition doesn't work. It creates unintended consequences. Let's focus on smart regulation, not outright bans, to protect both our communities and our freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Go ahead.
Chair Reynolds, Vice Chair Anderson, and committee members, my name is Jonathan Polanski. I'm the CEO for Plaid Pantry. I'm here to testify in opposition of Senate Bill 702. Plaid Pantry has been serving Oregonians for over 60 years. We own and operate 107 convenience stores and employ over 750 Oregonians. We are fully committed to keeping products, tobacco products, out of the hands of minors and take that responsibility very seriously. Our compliance record is among the best, if not the best, in the state. There's a growing narrative that all flavored tobacco products are designed to target kids. While I acknowledge there are some products on the market that clearly are marketed towards youth, these are not the products that Plaid Pantry or other responsible retailers sell. We have never sold a flavor like bubble gum, strawberry gummy bear, or any other varieties intended to appeal to minors. A blanket prohibition on all flavored tobacco products, while well-intended, will not effectively address underage tobacco use. Instead, it will unfairly penalize law-abiding adults and businesses while creating opportunities for illicit markets to thrive. If the goal is truly to prevent youth access to tobacco, I urge the committee to focus on three key areas. Strong enforcement, ensuring compliance at the point of sale, targeted restrictions, eliminating the flavors that are demonstrably marketed towards minors, and comprehensive education, equipping both adults and youth with the knowledge to make informed decisions. Mint and menthol tobacco products represent roughly 1/3 of our sales. Losing the ability to sell those products and the additional items consumers purchase alongside them would have a severe negative effect on our business. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Reynolds and members of the committee. My name is Danny Thompson, representing Brightside Distributing. Today, I urge you to oppose Senate Bill 702. Brightside Distributing employs 39 hard-working Oregonians. Our employees receive good wages, medical and dental benefits, and a matching 401K. Many of them have been in the business for over 20 years, and they rely on their jobs to support their families. Senate Bill 702 aims to ban the sale of flavored tobacco products. However, history has shown that such bans are ineffective. In states like Massachusetts and California, where similar measures have been implemented, illicit tobacco markets have thrived and tax revenues have suffered. It is important to note that in Oregon, the use of smoking rate is already at an all-time low of 2.1%, an 86% decline since 2001. Instead of sweeping bans, the most effective strategies for reducing youth tobacco use are enforcement and education. Rather than targeting responsible retailers, who comply with strict regulations and ID checks, lawmakers should focus on strengthening enforcement against illegal and online sales. Banning legal flavored tobacco products will not prevent underage access. It will only drive more sales to unregulated, online, and black-market sellers. Instead of pursuing ineffective measures, please prioritize enforcing existing laws, cracking down on illicit sales, and expanding successful education programs that have already proven effective in reducing youth tobacco use. Oregon needs balanced policies that protect public health and support small businesses, not another failed prohibition experiment. I kindly request that you vote against Senate Bill 702. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Before you leave, just a quick question, if I, again. I'm curious if the proponents of the bill have had any discussions with retailers, manufacturer industry? Have you been contacted or involved, Plaid Pantry?
Yes, sir. Thanks for the question. So, I mean, we work with our partners. There's been a lot of discussion about big tobacco. Big tobacco does not make bubble gum, these flavors that, as I testified to you, that we don't sell either. So, there's a, should be a pretty big bifurcation between mint and menthol, which I agree still falls under flavored products, but I would argue also that it's a very different thing than a colorful bubble gum product. And all of this stuff is behind the counter, and you have to have valid ID. We have, like I said, excellent training. Plaid Pantry, over the last five years, our compliance rate is over 98.5%.
Great, thank you. Thanks. Yeah.
I guess what I'm really looking for, has there been kind of discussion in the formulation of this bill as to, because I've heard some, through the testimony, some different options or ideas, and I'm just curious.
I've certainly met with some of the tobacco companies, but have not met with the store, the stores. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
That's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks. And then, as I, if I could indulge maybe five more minutes, committee, and I'm sorry, we could probably stay here for hours, and I wouldn't mind doing that, although Chair Patterson would, she's chairing a committee in 30 minutes that I will need to be at. But if we could take five more minutes, I'd be really grateful to bring up Dr. Glenn Galis, Minal Basu, and Christina Bodimer. Thank you so much for being here. And we are going to hold you to two minutes, our final six minutes of the day. Thank you so much for being here.
Dear Chair Reynolds, Vice President Chair Anderson, and members of the committee, my name is Minal Basu. I'm in here, I'm here in support of Senate Bill 702, representing Kaiser Permanente. I have worked as a registered nurse for 31 years. 15 of those have been in the pulmonary department, and I continue to work there. I see patients every day whose health have been severely compromised due to smoking. I see how hard it is for them to stop their lifelong smoking habit due to the powerful addiction of nicotine. I also have family members who have suffered the negative health impacts of smoking. My grandfather from India smoked, which worsened my mother's asthma. Both my brother and sister started smoking when they were very young, and they did not quit until they were 50 or 63 years of age. I'm here to testify, again, in support of Senate Bill 702. We strongly support the ending, the sale of all flavored tobacco in Oregon, prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products. Without exceptions or exemptions, is a huge step forward to preventing another generation of young people from living with a lifetime of addiction. Kaiser Permanente exists to provide high-quality, affordable healthcare services and to improve the health of our members and the communities we serve. We serve more than 616,000 members in Oregon Southwest Washington that access coverage through a variety of plans spanning from the commercial Medicaid and Medicare markets. As the nation's largest nonprofit integrated healthcare system, Kaiser Permanente is working to address upstream contributors to poor public health. In Oregon, tobacco remains the leading cause of preventable death. Reducing tobacco requires a multifaceted approach, starting with the prevent, preventing youth and young adults from initiating tobacco use. The rapidly growing use of tobacco products among our nation's youth is one of the most crucial public health issues currently facing in our country. Flavored tobacco plays a key role in convincing young people to try tobacco products. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. I think, are you the one who worked with Dr. Dexter?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I remember, I'm getting déjà vu from two years ago.
Yes.
Thank you. We miss her. Great, thank you, sir.
I'm Dr. Glenn Galis from Klamath Falls, Oregon, where I've been a physician for 50 years. I've witnessed the scourge of smoking on all peoples, including Caucasians, blacks, Hispanics, Native Americans, the rich and the poor. Tobacco does not discriminate; it has adverse health effects on everyone. I'd like to do things a little differently. I want to see a show of hands of the panel if you would take an all-expenses, free trip and ticket to Hawaii on a boat. If you would take an all-expenses-free trip and ticket to Hawaii on a Boeing 747, clearly, raise your hand. Please raise your hand if you would do that.
It's over $50.
Oh, not from a lobbyist, just over, it's a, just over.
Anybody, even the audience. Who would, who would accept the ticket?
Well, we have to be very careful who's giving it to us.
So, well, now I'd like to change the question and word it a little differently. Who would like to raise their hand if they'd accept the ticket if they knew that three of these Boeing 747s would crash every single day in the United States? That's how many people die from tobacco in this country. Although I worked very hard to get patients to stop smoking, I failed miserably. So, why is that? I really did try, and so did my patients. Nicotine and flavored products of tobacco are the most addictive legal products in the world. Most people who try to stop smoking have tried at least 10 times, and many of them fail. When I retired, I took smoking cessation classes, and there were four people in my class. A lot of people, right? Three of the four said it was much easier to get off heroin, methamphetamines, and cocaine than it was to stop the addiction of nicotine. Smoking cigarettes is the single greatest cause of preventable disease, early death, and healthcare expense in the world, and you can make a difference by passing this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, you mean three, three plane loads full?
Three plane loads full, yes.
Ah, thank you.
Every day.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair Reynolds and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Christina Bodemer, and I'm a Senior Government Relations Director for the American Heart Association, here today in support of HSB 702. To ensure we don't lose a new generation of kids to nicotine, we urge the removal of all flavored tobacco products from the market. Kids will gravitate towards any flavor left. Any exemptions for products will drive the creation of new ones, we've seen this in handheld hookahs already, and manipulating the marketplace and blatantly ignoring this legislation to continue to line their pocketbooks. To be clear, the best way to reduce the number of tobacco-related deaths and disease is to deter people from ever starting to use the products. I'd like to take a moment, you can refer to my written testimony, to set the record straight on a few of the things that you've heard today. Per the most recent tobacco retail licensure program data, convenience stores failed their inspections 23% of the time, and tobacco and vape shops, those that are designed to be 21-and-over stores, failed 27% of the time. Kids are getting these products from local stores. For online sales, since 2021, Oregon law has prohibited the online sales of tobacco products, and because of the federal PACT Act, many large online retailers like Amazon do not sell these products. Learning from those who have gone before us, the youth tobacco use preliminary data from the Massachusetts Youth Survey showed declines in youth tobacco use after implementation in that state of this policy. Youth e-cigarette use declined from 32% in 2019 down to 16% in 2023. To be clear, this data is use, not sales, which means that flavor restrictions prevent access, which indicates that youth aren't accessing a black market. You've heard a lot today about the loss of revenue to business and in tax revenue as a reason not to support this bill. What we're asking for you is to think about the value of prevention and the future generations that will avoid a life of addiction instead. I urge your support of Senate Bill 702.
Thank you so much. Question? Yes, sir.
If I could, not to challenge, because all I could do is look at a chart. Your statement of not the black market, yet I'm reading from the 24 National Youth Tobacco Survey, that 56% of the youth usage comes from Elf Bar and Breeze products, which are not FDA-approved and which aren't sold legally in the U.S. So, to me, that sounds like black market, but what would I know? So, I'm just challenging your question or your comment.
Chair Reynolds, Vice Chair Anderson, I would be happy to forward the study from Massachusetts that gives you exactly more data about this. I will send it to your office as soon as I leave this house.
And shall I share you my survey?
Yeah.
You are, I would, I would love to set up time with your office to talk about this further.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Great. Thank you, folks. I guess I will reserve just 30 seconds. I think you've heard from me time and again that as a pediatrician, I care about preventing illness and disease in our youth, which turns out we prevent illness and disease in our adults. I talk a lot about putting a fence at the top of a cliff instead of sending the ambulance to the bottom of the cliff. And I firmly believe that ending the sale of flavored tobacco will stop from minting, pun intended, new addicts to nicotine, which sets up young people for the demoralizing feeling of being addicted to a substance you can't quit, including, that's a, that's a feeling that is shared by adults, one of whom shared that with us today, Senator David Brock Smith. And when I think about Dr. Moseson, who had to leave, or our nurse from Kaiser, and what I hear from Dr. Maxine Dexter, who is now a Congresswoman, taking care of these patients whose lives are ended prematurely almost half the time is a hard, is hard for families, it's hard for the patients, really hard for the medical community. So, I implore you, let us let our kids reach their full potential. Let us protect our adults from becoming addicted to nicotine by ending the sale of flavored tobacco, which accesses youth to the nicotine addiction. Thank you all for your time today. Please, everyone submitted your written testimony. Thank you. And this ends our public hearing on Senate Bill 702 and the Senate Committee on Early Childhood and Behavioral Health for March 4th. Thank you. Thanks. Happy to talk. Yeah, yeah, yeah.